This conference will now be recorded.
Southway Hall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We have commissioners present this evening. Commissioner Michael.
Could all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the Southway Hall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to the website for public access. At this time, I'm going to ask our interim township manager to please review our public virtual meeting rules.
Good evening. The hybrid meeting rules, courtesy of the floor, for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference in the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or a question, please type your full name and address in the chat box. The staff member monitoring the go-to meeting will then unmute your microphone. You will then have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to also announce that the Board of Commissioners did meet an executive session this evening prior to our meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, courtesy of the floor, is there anyone here who has a public comment that they have on a non-agenda item? Hearing and seeing none, we will move on to our meeting minutes. Before us this evening, we have our July 20, 2022 Board of Commissioners Meeting Minutes. Is there any discussion on the minutes?
This is Commissioner Walk. I have one comment. Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's a minor item. So on page eight, for the paragraph titled Fund Balance Policy, I believe the word interim was meant to be internal, as in internal control of it.
Okay, we will make that correction. Thank you very much. Any other comments? Do I hear a motion to proceed with the approval of our meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. We have no presentations this evening. We have no ordinance this evening. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, Resolutions. And before us tonight, we have a resolution regarding a township manager. Our board has conducted an extensive recruitment process for township manager with the assistance of the Lafayette College Minor Center, and we have interviewed numerous candidates over the last several months. Tonight, for the board's consideration, we have before us a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Southway Hall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, appointing Thomas Petrucci as Township Manager. As a brief introduction, Tom holds a bachelor's degree in journalism from Temple University and a master's of public administration with an emphasis in financial management and leadership ethics from Villanova. He previously served as a township manager for the Borough of Bath from 2015 to 2012 to 15, excuse me. And in 2015, he was appointed as the first township manager for Plainfield Township and has served that community for the past seven years. At this time, I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution to appoint Thomas Petrucci as Township Manager. Do I hear a second? I will second. I will open for board discussion. Any comments from any board members?
My comment is maybe a little premature upon a positive vote. Congratulations, Tom, and I look forward to working with you very much.
Sure. And we would have to have you come to the microphone to speak if you want to make a comment with the virtual meeting. It can't pick up the audience, but that's okay. Is it turn the little button at the bottom?
Yeah. I wanted to say thank you to the Board of Commissioners for this opportunity, for having the confidence in me to take on this role, and I look forward to working with you and the employees and the constituents and business owners of Southway Hall Township. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of approving Thomas Petrucci as our Township Manager, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Congratulations and welcome to Southway Hall Township.
Tom, welcome aboard. We've been waiting for you.
Tom will begin his full-time employment with the township on Tuesday, September the 6, and we very much look forward to bringing you onboard, so thank you. Moving on to Resolution B, we have a resolution extending the conditional preliminary final approval granted to a major plan entitled Parkland Manor Phase 4 Senior Living. And I'm going to ask our long-range planner of the Community Development Department, Chris Stroller, to please present this item.
Good evening. As Diane mentioned, I'm Chris Stroller. I'm the long-range planner representing Community Development here tonight. You'll see in front of you, we have a resolution for the conditional preliminary final approval for the Parkland Manor Phase 4 Senior Living. As a little bit of background for this project, an application was submitted to further develop the property at 4636 Crackersport Road. This is otherwise known as Parkland Manor. The owner and the applicant is Pennsylvania Venture Capital Incorporated, who is represented here tonight. The Board of Commissioners granted final approval to Phase 4 in June of 2020 with two waivers and 17 conditions of approval. To date, 10 of these 17 conditions have been satisfied, and out of the remaining conditions, two of them are just legal protections. One is the requirement to record the plan, and therefore, there are four conditions that we are still working on with the developer. You'll see in your packet, there's information at the end of the conditions, and the applicant is requesting a retroactive 90-day extension on the preliminary final approval for this to satisfy the remaining conditions. The resolution in front of you will amend that original resolution, granting them the 90-day extension, allowing them until September 28 of 2022 to satisfy the remaining conditions. The Community Development Department is working cooperatively with the developer on these conditions and doesn't have any issues with the request presented in front of you. If you do have any questions for the developer, I believe they're represented by the attorney and the engineer here tonight.
Very good. Thank you, Chris. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
I do have one, President Kelly, for the applicant. I have no concerns, but my question is this. Can you share with us what has caused the delay? And I'm asking because I'd like to learn, you know, if we have trouble spots.
Yeah. My name is Joel Wiener, W-I-E-N-E-R, Suite 400 Commonwealth Building, Allentown, Pennsylvania. I'm the attorney for the applicant, Pennsylvania Venture Capital. The problem that's existed here has been one of COVID vacation and variety of other things to get the releases primarily. What's happened is the development of Phase 4, which is on Unit 7 of the condominium of what used to be West End Racquetball Club, probably dating myself calling it that, but probably easiest for most township residents to know what it is. On the, this is the old tennis courts and parking lot. What's happened is, over the years, there were, by reason of Route 22 and the new development that went in, there were some water meter pits that were put in. There was also a realignment of access to the sewer line. There's a, and with Greg Adams, we had figured out where the sewer line went, which is that it comes from the west, follows a stream, and then goes right along Route 22 up to 309 and somewhere ducks under Route 22 to head eastward and east and south in Allentown. What's happened is that the board, the resolution requires that there be releases of anything that could become a problem for the township. So mortgages, those types of items. Here, it was a little complicated because we had different condominium units and different financings, and we had to go back and forth as to which financings applied to which items. And you start getting into the point of color. I mean, not trying to be funny, but you're color coding so we can all go back with each other. In the old days, you'd have a meeting, you would sit down and get it all worked out. You'd get hold of your banker, your banker would be there, not, they'd be remote. So what's happened is, we're more in a bureaucratic item, not a township bureaucracy, but the rest of the banking world bureaucracy to deal with to get everything that's needed to get the assurance to the township solicitor that they have the, that they have all the items that they want to know that it's been released. So in terms of it, the main aspect had been done before, which was working out the arrangements for the letter of credit. The basic engineering has been done. This isn't a case where we're coming in saying, wow, we have an engineering problem we ran into. That's all been worked out. We've got the descriptions worked out. We just had these other things that were filling in items that occurred over the past and never got fully developed that, I believe, as the township looked at the plan and said, you know what, there's a number of things to clean up. So as we're going to those cleanup items, which generally are on the same property, on the overall property, but not in this development, that's where we had to draw in from different areas. And as you pulled one, you got to something else, and it sort of cascaded down that way. So I think we're at the point now where we've identified all the items we need, where, you know, the old days, you called the bank, you got something back a day later. Today, you call the bank, you get the call a day later, and then they have to find out who can sign off on it. So I think that's where we are with it, but we're at the final stage of that. The main thing is, the township has the letter of credit in place. Its plans have all been confirmed by the engineers. The general form and of the easements that the township is looking for have all been delivered, so we're just at the final stage of this item. So I mean, in terms of it, again, it's just a factor that with the post-COVID time and not getting everybody in the same room, things are seeming to take an extra three to four months that you think it's going to take two weeks, and it's three months later.
Great. Thank you, Attorney Wiener. I appreciate the explanation, and I'm glad that we're not, you know, part of the delay.
Now, the township's been, the township staff has been excellent to work with, and they've been very helpful. And as I say, it was, there were things that built up that no one, before this point, no one had actually focused on the plan. And when this plan came through, I think everybody started to focus on everything that was on the plan, what had been moved, and the goal was to clean it up now so that we don't end up in the future on another development. Or worse, if the ownership changed, the township would have to go pull things together from others, strangers to the site.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I do have a quick question for you. Please clarify, it was extended until 9/28/22, is that correct?
That's a request extended 9/28/22.
Okay, good enough. Do you feel confident that you'll be able to meet everything within that timeframe?
Well, we're trying not, I mean, if you want to give us an extra month, I'd love to. An attorney's always one more time, so we'd be happy to take more time. But, you know, trying to keep everybody under pressure. But if you could give us more time, as an attorney, I always love getting more time. It takes pressure off of stuff. But we can live with, we can live September 28.
Okay, very good. So if there are no other questions, are there any questions from the public on this agenda item? Hearing and seeing none, do I hear a motion to proceed with said resolution?
So moved.
I'll second that. Motion a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Good night.
Good night. Moving on to Resolution C, we have a resolution appointing Vincent Quinn as a regular member of the Southway Hall Township Civil Service Commission. I'm going to ask our police chief, Glenn Dorney, to please present.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. We're just here requesting that Mr. Quinn be appointed as a regular member. He's currently an alternate member of Civil Service, but with the retirement and moving on of Mike Bruckner, who moved out of state. We need to fill that full-time position on the Civil Service Commission, and we believe that Mr. Quinn has done a substantially excellent job for the last two years as an alternate member, and we believe he would be a perfect fit for the Civil Service Commission.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief Dorney. Are there any questions from the board? Yes, Commissioner Hodges.
I do have another question. So he's moving to a regular member. Maybe I'm jumping it because it's coming up in Item 10A. Will we still have an alternate position then?
We have two, we will then have two vacancies for alternates. So I'll put my little pitch out there if anybody's listening. We're still taking applications for that.
Thank you.
Very good question. Any others? Okay, seeing and hearing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said resolution?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And thank you to Vinnie for volunteering on Civil Service. We appreciate your time. Moving on to Resolution D, we have a resolution approving and adopting the First Amendment for Contract for Residential Municipal Solid Waste Collection, Disposal, and Recycling Services to provide for an extension of one year through 2023. And I will call on our interim township manager, Herb Bender, to please present.
Thank you. Southway Hall Township is requesting permission to extend the above referenced contract. Once, when the township went out to bid for the municipal solid waste in 2019, we gave the bidders an option to bid on a three- and a five-year contract. Township chose to award the three-year contract with an option to extend the contract at the last contractual year price. A copy of the bid tabulation is attached for reference. Waste Management has agreed to hold their pricing for another one-year term, which we feel the economy and the unstable fuel market, it would be in the best interest of the township to extend this contract. When you do look at the bid tabulations, don't get confused. When the bid was accepted, Advanced Disposal won the bid. They were the low bid and then bought out by Waste Management. So it will be under Advanced Disposal's bid numbers that we will be using, and they have agreed to hold the third contractual year pricing.
Thank you, Herb. Are there any questions from the board on this resolution? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, I'll make a motion to proceed with this resolution. Do we have a second? A second? Motion, a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We have no motions on our agenda this evening. We'll proceed to Agenda Item 10, Correspondence and Information Items. I will again call on our interim township manager to review our current vacancies and upcoming meetings.
All right. The current vacancies on boards and commissions. The Civil Service Commission, excuse me, has two alternate vacancies. The Green Advisory Council has three vacancies. Landscape Shade Tree Commission has two vacancies. Park and Rec Board has one vacancy. The Environmental Advisory Council has three vacancies. The upcoming meetings, they are posted on the website also. Tuesday, August 9, the Comprehensive Plan Workshop at 7:00 PM. Wednesday, August 10, Civil Service Commission, 1:00 PM. Keep an eye on the website for that one. There is a possibility that it will be canceled. Wednesday, August 10, Building Code Appeals Board, 3:30 PM. Wednesday, August 10, BOC Workshop, 6:00 PM. Friday, August 12, Movie in the Park, Fernwood Park, 7:45 PM. Monday, August 15, Green Advisory Council, 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Herb. And as Herb mentioned earlier, we are still accepting applications. If anyone is interested in serving on any of our boards or commissions, go to our website and please complete a form to send into the township. And also keep an eye, as Herb mentioned, for upcoming meetings. At times, they do have changes, so I appreciate that. Moving on to Old Business, I will again call on our interim township manager to review Where's Dam?
All right. Where's Dam, as everyone knows, we did reject the bids. We went right back out to advertise in the local newspapers on July 15 and July 29. The mandatory pre-bid meeting was held today at 10:00 AM, right down at Where's Dam. The questions to be submitted to PennBid, if anyone had any questions for it, the deadline was today at 4:00 PM. The bid opening will be on August 8, and we will be bringing it back to the BOC, hopefully to award the bid this time. We feel we are going to get competitive bids this time.
Very good. Thank you for that update. Old Business Item B. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Herb, were there any additional bidders present at the pre-bid meeting compared with the previous bidders?
No, the same players were involved this time as last time.
Okay, thank you.
Herb, are they aware of what the deficiencies were, that they could have completed bids this time?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, yep.
Any other questions from the board or the public? Okay, Agenda Item B, Comprehensive Plan Update. I'll call on Chris Stroller.
Thank you. As an update for the comprehensive plan, the team has been working to synthesize the goals, strategies, and implementation for all of the elements of the plan. We've worked through resource protection, community utilities, housing, community facilities, and we are finalizing the transportation components at our next workshop meeting this coming Tuesday at 7:00 PM. We are starting to dig into the land use plan, which will integrate all of the previous elements that I mentioned. And the team is, we have prepared a final outline of the plan, and we are starting to put together the draft itself. We will be conducting some public outreach this September in coordination with Parkland School District to get feedback on the final elements and to really get the community excited about the plan. We're looking at having a draft plan come October, and that will be the opening of the 45-day public comment period. And we're looking at a proposed adoption period of December of this year. All of the work leading up to this point has been posted on the township's website. You can find it on the comprehensive plan portion of the website, including the elements that I had mentioned and the associated goals and strategies. And if anyone is interested in digging into the details more, I strongly encourage you to attend our workshop meetings that are held on the, I believe that's the first Tuesday, or, I'm sorry, that would actually be the second Tuesday of the month. So the next one, we will be finalizing transportation and starting to get into land use at 7:00 PM this coming Tuesday. If anyone has any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
This is Commissioner, this is Commissioner Walk. I have a comment. Chris, this will be the first time you're hearing my comment, but I make it at every meeting for practically the last two years. I believe we need to have a written schedule, preferably a bar chart schedule, that shows us the end date, that shows us all the interim. It doesn't have to be extremely detailed, but it should at least show some high-level and mid-level milestones that indicate what's required to get to this December end date so that we can keep track of it and we can, you know, receive an ongoing report. I've asked for this repeatedly. We do not have it. So I don't give up hope that it could be produced. So between Herb and Dave Manhart, and now yourself, now that you're onboard, I think at the last meeting, Dave Manhart indicated that you have either an interest in this or a skill set in this. I'd like to see it at the next meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think we have somewhat what you're looking for as part of the schedule for the next workshop meeting. So I am certainly taking that comment into our notes, and we can certainly look at that for the Tuesday meeting. Thank you.
All right. That sounds great. Thank you, Chris.
Any other comments from the board? Any from the public? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Moving on to Item C, Jordan Creek Greenway, Phase 1 River Road Shared Pathway. I'm going to call on our Park and Rec Manager, Mike Kukets.
Good evening. So we are getting closer, I'll say. As you all know, we did receive the task of funding to complete the construction of the trail through the park. We have approximately one year to get everything lined up before we go out to bid to stay on schedule. I want to thank the three of you for joining us when we met with Penn dot Traffic the other day and had that discussion. It sounds like we've narrowed it down. You know, we had the five options. We've narrowed it down to possibly two potential options, and they even have Michael Baker looking at a third option outside of the scope of the original five that were created. Our plan as staff is to review those options and come to you with a recommendation at the next Board of Commissioners meeting, hopefully something that's fiscally responsible and very safe for our residents so we can stay on schedule, keep our timeline going, and get the trail built at the end of '23 or spring of '24.
Very good. Thank you, Mike. Any questions from the board? Any from the public? Okay, thank you. Appreciate your presentation. Moving on to Agenda Item 12, Direction and Discussion. We have on our agenda this evening a presentation by our interim township manager, Herb Bender, regarding the NICSIL 360 platform.
Yes, thank you. I've been working with Jeff Kelly also on this next NICSIL 360 contract. Ed and Chief Dorney was in the meeting with us also on this. We feel it would be very helpful to the township to move forward with NICSIL 360. We are currently under contract with our other reverse 911 call system. We cannot get out of that, but we cannot, we can also not renew at the end of the year. What I would like to do is run these side by side for the rest of this year. I can cover some of it, so we don't need to come back for more money. Jeff can help cover it also. So this way, we can run them both. If we do have an issue or we're not fully set up yet with the NICSIL 360, with the upload of all the information, we still have the reverse 911. But moving forward, we would like to move into the NICSIL 360. In this contract, we have a one-year contract with them with the option for two more additional one-year contracts, so we're not locking ourselves into a three-year contract. This way, we can sign for one year, and if we love it, we can have the capability of taking another one-year contract. Or if we don't like it, we could get out of it then. It will make a lot of social media for the police, Parks and Rec, a lot easier. They can run it all right through NICSIL 360 also. Same thing if we would have a big issue or even our paving, we could put messages out through NICSIL. We're going to be in these areas on these dates from time to time. If we have other water main breaks, we can send it out to the residents on that block that they might be out of water. We will get a million messages a year under this contract. And the price of this contract would be $4,050 for the NICSIL 360, and the setup fee would be $324. So the first year would be $4,374. And then if we took the option for the two additional years, it would be $4,050.
Thank you, Herb. Are there any questions from the board on this discussion item?
I have one question. I'm sorry. Does somebody else want to go first?
No, go ahead, Commissioner Walk. I was going to say something, but go ahead. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it. At one point in time, I used to get emails from NICSIL, and I thought they were awful. Did South Whitehall Township previously have NICSIL, or were those coming from like Upper McEngey Township?
Mike, ever since I have been here, we have had reverse 911. I did hear in the past that they did have NICSIL 360, the free version. This is a lot better version that we will be paying for, though.
Okay. I thought it was very effective.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Herb, in order for this system to work, we need the phone numbers from the residents to get the information. Is that correct?
Correct. And what we can use to get that is all the MUNIS information from water and sewer, refuges, everything like that, to get that uploaded into the NICSIL 360.
Okay, just based on what you just said, is it a voluntary thing? What if residents don't want to be part of this, but you have their phone number?
Then they just don't look at the message. So yes, if you, we could take them out if they want to opt out. We could do that, but when we load this up, it will be in there. So they will get the first matches, but if they do call and say they don't want it, then we could take them out of the system also.
Okay, all right. And I guess the other side of that coin would be, would it be some kind of, I don't want to say marketing, but some kind of communication that this system is available? And this would be for residents who are, let's say, new to the township or weren't aware previously?
Yeah, we're going to look at also putting something in the water and sewer bills and stuff like that to make sure we are current. And Jeff did have a comment also.
Jeff, to come to the microphone, please.
What we plan on doing is to approve that our community preparedness day on September 10th, having QR stands that they can come up to their smartphone, take a QR, and sign up for it. And it'll automatically figure out whether a South Whitehall residence or not. A lot of communities do that already. So I was, I think I made the QR code temporarily, and it's very, very easy just to go in from your smartphone and sign up for it. So we plan on doing that, that our, we get approval to do it at our community preparedness day on September 10th.
I should have known you had it well on hand, Jeff.
Hey, we've been working together, and the biggest thing, I think, is Sergeant Grozier will never have to be posting on four different social media things. It'll take it to everywhere immediately. Same way with Mike, it'll take it to our township website, it'll take it to Instagram, it'll take it to Twitter, it'll take it to Nextdoor. It's not already on Nextdoor, but it'll take it to just about every social media platform that's out there.
Perfect. It just sounds to me like a great service to the residents and yet minimal cost.
And we're working, we've already talked to GEO, they're going to do a community outreach to that mile zone, to send them a letter, give them that QR code to sign up, and we're going to be working with Alpo too, to give them that mile evacuation zone so they can work with us to get that community outreach, to get everybody signed up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just going to comment on the notification, we're right around the cutoff for our newsletter. So if this is something the board does have on our next agenda and it is approved, we could certainly put an article in the newsletter that goes to every household in the township, put some information on our website, and really get that out, including the utility bills, as you spoke of. I think it's a good opportunity. And one thing that I thought of when you were mentioning, you know, water breaks, one of the things that I know I hear residents question in the fall is, when are my leaves going to get picked up? And if there's a way, maybe that we could even tell by neighborhood a few days in advance so people could care on that weekend before, you know, where you're going to go into their neighborhoods, it might help streamline that service that the community, we provide to the community as well. Commissioner Hodges?
Oh, another question. I have a quick question, Herb, maybe Jeff can answer for me. When you opt out, is, can you opt out with a simple text on your phone?
Correct. You can just say opt out, no more communications.
Okay, so it's not just for that one? It will continue to, you won't get any more notifications? Or do you have to call the township building?
You just, it'll automatically opt out. The only thing I'm not sure of is, were DEP rules and regulations, you can opt out, I believe.
You can opt out of the notification by the NICSIL 360 because DEP also requires us to hang a door hanger to notify also, because some people don't have phones. So we would put this out, but we still have to put a door hanger out also to notify the residents if there is something wrong with the water system.
And one nice thing about that, the day we had our second meeting, is Herb drew a diagonal polygram on the map, and it showed, got all the areas you want to do. You can say you want to do a one-mile radius, but you don't want the one-mile radius to go in Allentown, so it'll pick just a one-mile radius in South Whitehall or a two-mile radius just by drawing your finger on the map. It's very cool, so.
And it's very user-friendly. What we have now, this is a lot easier to use than what we have previously.
I remember during Hurricane Sandy, we did a reverse 911. It took us almost three hours to read the manual and get the reverse 911. We put out almost 12,000 messages, but it took us quite a while till we figured that out, because that was the very first time I ever used it, was Hurricane Sandy. So this will be much easier. You don't need a degree in whatever it was to figure it out, but thank you.
Any other discussion from the board on this? Any from the public? So if the board's in agreement, then this can be brought to the agenda at our next meeting?
Correct. We just wanted to get a direction and discussion to feel which way we were going, so.
Okay, is the board in agreement to bring this forward?
We'll get ahold of them, get a hard copy of the whole contract, we'll put it in the packet next time, and this way, everyone will be able to see it, right up front, the costs, everything, the length and terms of everything. So we will reach out to him probably tomorrow and get this ready for the 17th meeting.
Excellent. Well, thank you for bringing that to the board. Is there any matters that the board would like to bring during discussion and direction this evening? I just have one comment. I want to thank Chief Dorni and our South Whitehall Township Police Officers and any staff that was involved in preparing for and launching our Police Night Out event last night. It was a wonderful community event that was enjoyed by all the residents who stopped in, so thank you.
Thank you very much, and I will take this opportunity, because I know he's listening online, but Sergeant Grozier put many, many hours into developing that program. He should really get the credit for that. He has worked tirelessly for months now to put that together. So I want to thank him personally and publicly for all the hard work that he did put into National Night Out.
Absolutely. Thank you, Sergeant Grozier. We appreciate it. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 13, courtesy of the floors or anyone at this time who would like to address any non-agenda items to the board. Okay, hearing and seeing none, I'm going to move on to Agenda Item 14. I need a motion to authorize payment of invoices and disbursements.
So moved.
Wait a second?
Second.
Okay, motion a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have no executive session this evening. Before we adjourn, I do want to invite you all to please join us. We're going to have a light reception to welcome Tom Pachucci as our new township manager, so please do join us after the meeting. And I need a motion to adjourn. So moved. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you and good evening.